Remember the, it's a wonderful, when a bell rings, an angel gets its wings?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Oviedo City Council. Today is February 5th. Time is 6:30. We have three members of council here. And before we get started, if you would, please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. First up on our agenda, I guess we should call the meeting to order first. It is 6:31 and we have three members of council present. First up on our agenda is recognition from the Florida City and County Managers Association. And I believe we have a representative in the audience here today to share what this is about.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of FCCMA, which stands for, for the City and County Management Association. My name is Ari Javiet. I'm the Vice President for Epic Engineering, and I also serve on the Communications Committee for FCCMA. This recognition is basically presented to you and to the city manager for the council manager form of government. We want to recognize you. You've been doing this thing for last 35-plus years and have been very successful. One of the key things we like to highlight as part of this recognition is that council manager form of government is key when it comes to navigating challenges in the community, and we would like to recognize you for that. So if it's okay with you, would like to ask if the mayor and the city manager, Brian, could come and receive this recognition.
All right, let's all, let's all head down there. And for anyone in the audience who didn't quite hear what, what the honor is about, it is because Oviedo is celebrating 35 years of being a city manager, mayor form of government. And what that means, a lot of people don't realize, mayor is a part-time job. So the person who runs the day-to-day operations here at the city is our city manager, who right now is Brian Cobb. So we're glad to be able to go off to work during the day and leave all of the, the professional stuff to our full-time city manager. So as I'm walking back up, we'll do more, more talking about what it means to be a council manager form of government. That means that from 1924, oh, 1925, when Oviedo was founded, until 1986, there was no city manager. And also, the mayor did not run the city. So the only required employee for all those years, I believe it was the city clerk, who right over here is our official city clerk, Elian Rivera. And Ms. Rivera has been here for how many years? Three, five years? Oh my goodness, time fly. Well, but no, how long have you been like, the like, okay. So she has been like, the official city clerk for three years. And then Madeline Hui over here is also part of the clerk's office. And so that, that job had to exist, and city attorney had to exist, but it was not until 1986 that we got an official city manager. All right, moving right along, though. First up, we have the approval of the minutes for October 2nd and 16th, and the 23rd for the work session. I'll entertain a motion from?
Move to approve.
All right. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And unanimously, it is approved. All, all three minutes are approved. Next up, we have public comment. I do have one. I don't know. It is off now. Yeah. Took me a while to realize I was talking to this instead of that, but yeah, it's off. But I think maybe, can you still hear when I'm back here? Kind of? Okay. First request to speak is from, oh, that, that fixed it. Something changed, is from Bill Hyde.
Good to see you, sir.
It won't be when I'm done. Good evening. My name is Bill Hyde. I live at 2379 Audley Street. And no, it's not in the city of Oviedo. And, and I'm one of the, try to be the last one to, to bring up a dead horse, but I'm hoping this one still has a little bit of breath left in it. I, I know everybody's talking about putting the traffic light up at 426 in Lockwood, and it's, it's a big deal. And I understand the reasons why it came here. But I want to give you some personal observations and why I don't think it's a good idea. I travel that way three days a week. Early in the morning, there is a stream of traffic coming in. And no, I know, those folks don't live in Oviedo, so maybe, you know, they don't count as much. But those folks are streaming in. When you put a traffic light in there, you're going to have a backup going halfway out to Geneva that's going to make a lot of people, at first, late for work, and second, pretty darn unhappy. I, I realize that it's, it's Geneva folks, and, and it's cut through traffic and all like that. But there's got to be a better way. First of all, I, I can't imagine where it's so urgent that we need a traffic light there. I drive, I drive through there as much as anybody around here, and it's just not that bad. I know that sometimes it can get a little frustrating during peak times, but it's probably a lot less frustrating than driving down Mitchell Hammock. So why we need to plant another traffic, why you guys need to put another traffic light up there, I, I think there, there must be a way that we could get through sometime. And, and I know the word roundabout makes everybody creepy, too. But I, I remember when you put the roundabout in, and everybody said it was terrible, but you know what? It works. I drive through that roundabout several times a week. It works really well. There's new roundabouts coming everywhere. I know it takes more time and more money, but from a traffic standpoint, and from a traffic flow standpoint, and saving gas and the environment standpoint, I think a roundabout would be a better way to go, even if it takes a little bit longer. I'm a, I'm a member of the GCA, Geneva Citizens Association. I'm not speaking on behalf of them. I don't even live in Oviedo, in Geneva. But I'm on my way out right now, when I leave here, to their annual meeting. And I guarantee you, that's going to be a topic of discussion. So, folks, I'm, I'm just asking that you, you know, give us some consideration, put your thinking caps on, and see if maybe there's some way you can not add another traffic light into the community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address council at this time? Oh, got Mr. Ott, and then Ms. Morrison.
Hi, my name's Alan Ott, 1000 Lake Rogers Circle. I wasn't going to say anything about roundabouts, but I am very much in favor of roundabouts, as is Bill. So what I came here to, to ask, and maybe this is going to come up later, but, you know, public comments at the beginning, and, you know, you don't get to talk later. So in item number seven, about the gas, the re-upping the gas contract, all of the previous contracts were 10 years, and this next one is, what it looked, from what it looks like, is going to be 30. And I'm trying to understand why we're going to go from, from 10 all the way to 30. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. And if you could, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Shanti Va Morrison. I'm here for the Peace Run. We are a torch really run that goes through 160 countries around the world, and it was founded by Stritchin Moy in 1987. This is our 37-year anniversary. And we have peace trees in other cities right here in Orlando. And it would be nice to have one in your beautiful city of Oviedo. The purpose of these peace trees is to invite people to reflect about inner peace. This is why Stritchin Moy founded the Run, to make people notice and to make, bring the awareness that peace begins in the heart of each individual. And from there, it goes from you, to your family, your community, our state of Florida, and to the world at large. So this is the way that we spread peace, and begins with each of us. So these peace trees are a, like, something to remember. As a tree, the tree grows, this is how we spread peace. We have really beautiful results in the other cities. People are really happy with it, and it's a reflection to reflect, feel peace within your heart, and spread it to others. We also go to schools in boys and girls' clubs, and the directors of this boys and girls' club were telling me what a wonderful thing it is to bring these peace trees, where children can sit down and reflect of their own peace and how to behave, how to become more aware of being kind to others. And now schools are doing that. When the peace trees are planted, and when we visit schools, they have a bench where they sit down and they think of peace, because right now, children need to become more peaceful. There's so much stress right now, all this, you know, the kids are going through. So they have a place where they can sit down, take a moment, and have a minute of peace. And also, they use this bench for, to be kind to others. If children are feeling sad, or they're new in the school, and they don't have friends, then that's like their little bench where they sit down, and they're kind to one another. And they say, hey, you're not going to be my friend today. So schools are implementing this in schools, in the places that we have here in Seminole County, in our state of Florida, and around the world. So that would be nice if we could have one. We'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address council at this time? All right, with that, we'll close public comments.
I've got a question for the city attorney. Would, would it be okay at this time for me to make it, for me to move to reconsider approving the engineering, or should we do that at a later time? Wait, I can't do it. I have to ask, here.
Yes, that's, that's.
Okay.
Can I let you be the presiding officer for a split second?
Sure. Okay. All right. I, I move we reconsider covering the engineering, so we can rethink this roundabout idea, not rush forward with something that it sounds like, we've had one resident in Oviedo say he prefer a roundabout, and we've had Geneva come and say they would, would rather not have a light at this time. So it may be possible that having no light is better than having a light. I mean, and I'd be interested in having a further discussion about that.
Well, my understanding was that our agreement was we would do the design for the intersection, and the county would do the implementation. Why wouldn't we still want to do that? Whether it's a traffic light or a roundabout, why don't we go back to the county and ask them to reconsider whether we need a traffic light or not? And if it takes a little bit more time, we're, we're in favor of that. So I don't know if we need to reconsider and take it off the table that we're not going to do a design, but we can reach out to the county, and it's really a county project, as far as I understand, and try to lobby them to come up with the funds, or, or get an agreement at least to look at a roundabout.
Is that a second to reconsider? Which makes it come back to a different meeting. So we wouldn't have to decide at this meeting to, to undo, we, we can't at this meeting undo the decision previously made to fund the engineering. But my understanding is that we are, we specifically funded engineering for traffic signalization, not to investigate whether a roundabout would better handle traffic long-term. So I think.
My thought is, is that if you want, you can just give us direction, as Mr. Britton said, if all three of you feel that this would be a thing to do, we can, we could send a correspondence up to the county and say, at tonight's meeting, the city council gave us direction to see if you would consider doing a roundabout at this intersection instead of doing the signalization. And we can see what the, what it is. I don't know if we would have to actually do the motion to reconsider or not. I think you could just give me direction to do that.
Okay.
No, if, if it needs to later on, we can, we can come back.
Figure it out later. So I, I think at this point, we need to vote on the motion to reconsider, but not perhaps include it on the, on the agenda until Mr. Cobb discovers whether it definitely needs to come back.
Yeah, why don't we wait until Mr. Cobb comes back, you know, give him direction, and then when he comes back, we can make the motion to reconsider.
Well, the motion to reconsider really needs to be made tonight, because it has to be made the, the next meeting after the motion, the original motion, that you want to reconsider. So.
Okay. So we have a motion. We've got a second.
I didn't understand what Ms. Britt said.
I'm sorry. That was a little crazy what she stated. So the, the motion for, to reconsider would need to be made tonight, because it has to be made at the, the meeting following the meeting that the motion you're reconsidering passed.
Okay. I don't, I don't understand the reason behind that. I think we're giving direction as.
Well, I think we need to vote on whether to reconsider. That will let him do both of the things. They'll think legally necessary, and then go try to tackle it another way.
If the county is hard over on, on putting a traffic signal in there, and we say, no, we're not going to do the design, that's going to delay the process even further. So that's my rationale, is that let's not turn off the faucet until we know that we, we have agreement with the county, then we can come back. And I think it's a budget issue, isn't it, Brian? That we come back and, and unallocate the design funds?
As far, no, we have the, you, you all gave us the allocation.
Yeah, but if we came back later and say, let's not do that, we'll just do a budget amendment.
But we can't just undo after, after tonight, we can't undo it.
Why? I, I don't understand why.
The, as far as a motion to reconsider, it has to be made by a person who voted in the majority, and it has to be done at the next meeting. So that's, that's what Ms. Britt was talking about.
You said that so much better than I did.
That if it's a motion to reconsider, if, if, let's say we reached out to the county and said, would you all consider doing a roundabout? And they came back and said yes. Then we would bring a completely new resolution. It would repeal the old resolution, and, you know, we would have it restructured so that it would be to design a roundabout. If you want to, you could, you could do the motion to reconsider, set the motion, set the reconsideration date for March the 4th, and we can come back and we can report whether or not the county said, yes, we will, or no, we won't. And then if, if they say, no, we want, then you can either.
We can ratify it.
You can reconsider it, or you can not reconsider.
Okay, so we're not, we're not undoing what we've already done, we're just going to reconsider it?
Yeah, it, what it does, it's scheduling the reconsideration. That's what you're doing.
But you used the word repeal. That's what I was talking about. Maybe later on, we can repeal it.
If, if they were to come to us and say, we want to design a roundabout, then we would probably have to come back to you and ask you to reapprove, yes.
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess I'm okay with reconsidering it.
So if you're going to do the motion, what I would do, Mayor, is tack on there that reconsideration on March the 4th.
Okay. I, I amend the motion to reconsider that, and I, I don't know how to properly phrase it, but I think we all know what we're talking about.
I was just looking that up.
Okay, good, thank you. I need to, to pull up a, a past meeting to, to get that.
And this no way affects the right turn lane that we're putting in, right, Brian?
No, that, that's going in no matter what. And I think that's part of the rub for some people who are looking at this. I was seeing Mr. Wyatt, and he said it mine.
Uh-oh. If we do this reconsideration on the signalization, it affects the turn lane?
If you install the turn lane, which is coming to the next, on the next council meeting for approval, then it may get wiped out in a future roundabout design. And then we've invested this money, several hundred thousand dollars into a turn lane, that will get wiped out. There's a whole bunch, there's a lot of variables involved. I mean, there's a lot of ifs. I'm not going to tell you it will, but there's, there's a lot of variables involved with this, to switch.
I understand that, that, that may be wasting money, but it, I don't see this roundabout coming in the near future. I think it's going to come.
It would take substantially longer to design, especially if it requires right-of-way. And if it's not a willing seller, then we're in imminent domain, and it could take.
Okay. I just want to, yeah, I want to make sure we put the right turn lane in, because that's, that's a short-term or immediate.
Yeah, and that will, and, and the right turn lane will mitigate a lot of the issue that's up there now.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Yeah, we've already, we've already issued the bid on the right turn lane.
Yeah, we've already, we've already issued the bid on the right turn lane.
Yeah, okay.
They'll be staging it.
Yeah, you'll see that on the next council meeting.
Okay. Mayor, my suggestion is this, if you want to.
Thanks, Bobby.
Do the motion, you would do a motion to reconsider Resolution Number 4420-24 at the March 4th, 2024 meeting.
Twenty dash twenty-four. All right. I move we reconsider Resolution 4420-24 at the March 3rd meeting.
March 4th.
March 4th meeting.
Yes, March 4th.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Oh, you're the chairman, I keep forgetting. Yeah, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You can just hang on to the gavel.
No, you're good. It's all yours.
All right, I gotta get back to the spot up here, because I went over to look for the resolution Mr. Cobb just found. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of counsel?
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it passes unanimously. We don't have any public hearings this, this day, but we do have the first reading of an ordinance. If you could please read that for us, Ms. Ross.
Yes, Mayor. Also, before we do the, the reading, Councilmember Pollock had contacted me with some, some requested revisions, some concerns about the, the, the agreement, one of which was the 30 years, the 10 to 30 years, he expressed concerns about that. And the other two were, in the prior agreement, there was an abandonment clause, which is missing in this, this particular agreement. And there also, Section 11, there was a favored nations clause that pertained to a change in the rate, where we would have, if we had another company come in, and we had entered into a franchise agreement with that company, and we, we had a lower rate paid, then we would have to honor the same for Peoples Gas. And likewise, if they have another contract with another governmental municipality entity, and it's a higher rate, then we would be entitled to the higher. So the favored nations clause, and I agree that the, those two clauses should be added. Mr. Spencer Pylant is, is here. He's the regional manager for Peoples Gas, TECO. We discussed the two revisions, and doesn't have, have an issue with doing that. So if you do move to approve this, or to set it for, not to approve, but set it for public hearing, I'd advise that you do so with those two revisions. In my assessment, they're not substantial, would not require a second, another, a second first reading. So we could do the second reading with those revisions, which are not substantial in nature. And Mr. Pylant has offered to answer any questions that you might have about that. He's, he advised there's some standard language that could be used for those two provisions.
Okay, I'm, I'm having a hard time with that. I think it's the speakers, I don't think it's you. But could you just summarize the two revisions one more time?
Sure. One is the abandonment clause, which is, in the event the franchise is terminated due to the company ceasing operations, then, or, or provides notice to the city of its intent to abandon the, the, the system, then the city would have the ability to convey or transfer those assets. So we would be able to essentially take control over the assets if they're abandoned. And then the other one is the favored nations clause, where we would be, pay the higher rate if another government entity receives a higher rate, and likewise, we would have to pay.
And Brian, what, what is the rationale for the 30-year term?
I, I believe it's, that's the, that's the new standard.
But it sounds like everybody's cool with 10, so, yeah.
You know, I, I'm, I'm thinking, the only time I, we talk about these things is with the power companies.
Right, and those are much longer.
Those are much longer?
Yes. Yeah, those are fifty years.
But then we're beholden to them for much longer, if something happens, though.
And I think one of the things, I know Ms., Ms. Ross and I were talking about the other day, and one of the things about it is, is that we get a 6% franchise fee, and that's the maximum that we can charge. So it's not like that we would, we're gonna get 6% regardless if it's 10 years or 30 years.
Okay.
And so that, to me, but I believe, and probably Mr. Pylant can speak to the request from TECO, that as far as the increase from 10 to 30 years. But my understanding is, is that that's the standard now, and that.
Is, is that because of the cost of infrastructure? You have to recoup some of that, or?
Well, let's back up for just a second here and go the right order. First, let's read the title, the ordinance by title only, and then we'll ask you up to share a few remarks. Okay? All right, Mrs. Ross.
Okay. Ordinance Number 1738, an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, granting to Peoples Gas System, Inc., its successors, and assigns a non-exclusive natural gas franchise agreement to use the public rights of way of the City of Oviedo, Florida, and prescribing the terms and conditions under which said franchise may be exercised, making findings, providing for conflict severability codification, as well as the correction of scrivener's errors and an effective date.
Thank you. We've already had sort of a background of what this is, and we've got the applicant here, or I guess the representative of the company here. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am. Spencer Pylant, TECO Peoples Gas, 600 West Robinson, Orlando, Florida. And can answer any of the questions that you all have.
Okay. I think we, we have the answers that we were looking for. You're okay with the two, adding the two changes?
Yes, sir. You know.
Abandonment and the.
We have no, no plans to leave the City of Oviedo at all. Been here for a long time, intend to stay here for a long time. And then, as far as the most favored language, most favored nations language, that's something we're amenable to as well, meaning that if there was a, another municipality, say in Seminole County, that were to earn a higher franchise, or negotiate a higher franchise fee, then you would automatically get that higher franchise fee as well.
Out of, out of curiosity, are you planning on expanding your system in the city?
I'm not sure of, you know, exact plans within the city, but we're always looking for opportunities to keep up with growth and demand as Florida continues to grow.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the 10 versus 30 years, is that something you're seeing across the industry right now?
So across the industry and across Florida, we typically do terms of 30 years, either 30 years entirely, or we'll break it up to where there's maybe a 10-year with an automatic renewal of another 10, and then another 10. Or it could be, we've seen some cities do two 10s, and then five-year renewals after that. So just some variety of 30. The, the reason we try to tackle 30 as a whole is because it's a long-term investment in our assets, and we need time to earn that return to pay that asset off.
And where are you located right now? I know inside-city limits. Where are you served?
So there, there's a map that's attached to the agenda of today's hearing.
Well, yeah, but like, just for people who are out in the audience listening.
Yeah, so we have approximately 287 customers in the City of Oviedo, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Appreciate it.
All right, with that, what's the pleasure of counsel? Or is there any additional discussion, I guess, first?
Also, the, we're requesting to schedule the.
Yes, what we'd, what we'd recommend is that you schedule your public hearing for March the 4th, instead of February 19th, so that we can make the changes to the ordinance and bring it back on, on the fourth. It'll give us more, it'll give us time to make all the changes and get it into the workflow.
So what is the pleasure of counsel?
We make a motion to schedule a public hearing for March 4th, 2024, with the addition and changes of adding the abandonment clause and the favored nations clause.
And, and perhaps the 10 years as well?
I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I would like the 10 years to be in there, because it sounds like it's not an issue, and 10 is better than 30.
10 years with the automatic renewals every other 10 years?
I mean, they're not even asking for that.
Well, that's what the gentleman just said, that they usually get a 30-year period to pay for the capital cost, but it may be a 10 with an automatic renewal after 10, and then automatic renewal after 20.
Okay, I'd, I'd rather just be straight-up 10 versus automatic anything, with some sort of graceful exit if for some reason, things aren't working out 10 years from now.
I'm not, I'm not really, I.
Our, our resident, we have a council member who is a utilities guy, and he's recommending we do straight-up 10. So, am I understanding correctly that?
No, he just asked why. He just asked why.
Why 30? Okay.
He, he wasn't opposed to it.
That's correct. He wasn't, he was not opposed to the 30 years. He did it just, he, he brought that up as a question. He did want, but when we spoke, he, the two revisions that he, that he wanted to see were the.
Favored nations and abandonment.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I believe we've covered that. We wouldn't be losing any franchise fee, because we're already maxed out at 6%. So that would be the big concern.
Yeah.
Do you need me to restate that?
I'm sorry. We were, we were saying that we were wondering if we had a second or not. That's why we were.
No, that's why I asked you. I need to make the motion again, like, before we.
Are you guys cool with the idea of 10 plus some, some breathing point at 10 years? I would feel much better with.
I think we need a second for the discussion.
Yes. Oh, I seconded it.
Oh, you did? Okay. Thank you.
Wait, so now we're discussing?
So now, now, yeah, I think we're back to discussion on the motion, to definitely add the two things that Councilmember Pollock suggested. And my hope is that the motioner and seconder would be friendly to a 10-year firm commitment with some sort of industry-standard breathing room at the 10-year mark, and renewing for another, I don't know if it's a reevaluation of terms or what.
I don't believe that's how they structure it. They said it's an automatic renewal, which in.
Well, what's the point of that?
If you think about it, it's 30 years. It automatically renews. It doesn't require more paperwork. So you're asking for a different kind of contract to go for just 10 years.
Yes, I am.
Correct. But I don't even know if they're offering that, so.
Are you offering that? Is that something you could do?
Mayor, what we could do is do a, a 30-year agreement, and then, in 10 years, have a renewal period to where we renegotiate with city staff like we did here, and then bring it back before this body to be, you know, renewed or changed any way, and then do that again 10 years. So it'd be three sets of 10. It wouldn't be an automatic renewal, but we could, we have some language that we could offer up to the city attorney that would give you, you know, the ability for us to have the 30-year agreement, but then within there have two opportunities every 10 years to meet with the city again on the document.
Okay. I, I feel a lot more comfortable with that, if, if my colleagues are, are amenable to it.
It's okay with you, it's okay with me. You're, we're trying to make it, make it right for you.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that. If it's your pleasure, I can get some of that language to staff tomorrow.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Are you amenable to updating your motion to include the language provided by?
Terms with renewals? If, yeah, I will amend that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And unanimously, that passes, or that is scheduled for its second hearing, with additional different language. Next up, we have Resolution 4330-24. Mr. Cobb, if you could please get us up to speed on that, or whoever might be the person getting us up to speed.
Actually, this is Mr. Robert Utsi. He's gonna be giving you a presentation. This is a request for council to approve piggybacking an existing professional services agreement between Osceola County and ZHA, Inc., for facility construction consulting and owner's representation in general, general consulting services. If you remember back with last year, when we were doing the referendum, ZHA helped us out tremendously in reviewing some of our work and looking at our numbers. So one of the things that we looked at as we moved forward with the public safety building that, actually officially bringing them onboard, and this would be the first step, would be entering into this agreement for contractual services, and then as we have work for them to do, we would issue them work orders. And so Mr. Utsi is here tonight to tell you about ZHA.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I just wanted to give you a brief introduction of ZHA. I'm Robert Utsi, a principal with the firm. We've been in central Florida advising owners for four decades, since the early 80s, and we have a staff of 30. We have a deep staff, and the average experience of our team is between 25 and 40 years. And we provide services exclusively for owners, mostly governmental, counties, cities, airports, healthcare systems. And we provide a broad range of services, planning, master planning, programming, space needs, studies, facilities, assessments, and those kind of things. We also help owners hire architects, and we manage architects, and we help them hire contractors, and we manage the contractors on behalf of the owner. Most of my colleagues at our firm are, have already had a lot of experience in the industry, working, you know, careers with big companies, whether it's engineering, or design, or construction. So we know how the owner, you know, we know what the owner needs, sitting on your side of the table. A lot of what we do is public safety. Some of the things you see on that slide are the Osceola Judicial Center, we, we manage the Seminole County Judicial Center, the Seminole County Jail, and that type of public safety facility. Here's just a few projects that we've done recently. We managed the, the new city hall for City of Ocoee. We managed the City of Stewart Public Safety Complex, the City of Lake Mary Municipal Services Complex, and the Microelectronics Research Facility down in Osceola County. We're currently supporting Apopka with their new public safety building, which will house both fire and police headquarters. We started from early programming, and we've helped them bring the architect onboard. We're gonna help them get the contractor onboard, and then we will manage the whole process for the city. Also, managing a new fire station for City of Sanford at the airport. And also in Ocoee, we're managing the new regional law enforcement training center, as well as supporting some of their ARPA-funded infrastructure projects. The, this just, I just wanna emphasize that we, that we follow a very disciplined and structured process to make sure that, that we cover every base on behalf of the owner. In this particular case, City of Apopka hired us at the very beginning, so we, we met with the police and fire stakeholders, as well as IT, and made sure we got all the programming that they wanted in the building into the architect's RFP. So just wanted you to know that we have a very disciplined process, which allows us to manage risk on your behalf. We can skip that one. And, and again, these are just a few other projects that we've managed over the years. We did NASA's master plan, which is still being implemented, and lots of city halls and public safety facilities. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody from the audience? We, we don't have to do public comments for this.
You can, you can.
I think we should. Would anybody from the public like to address counsel at this time on this topic? All right, with that, we will close public comments. And what is the pleasure of counsel?
Recommend we approve Resolution 4430-24.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think they've already done a lot of work for us, pretty much for free, so, and their rates are really reasonable, and I think they do a good job, so I'm looking forward to actually paying them.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it passes unanimously. We don't have any discussion items. Next up, the city manager's report.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of items that I need to review with you tonight. The first one is, I'd like to have Chief Woodward come to the podium and give you some good news. We recently had an inspection by the Florida Department of Health of our EMS services, and we did very well. And so I'd like to have him deliver that for you.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I do come before you with some good news. I'm not sure if everyone is aware or not, but our, our ability to provide emergency medical service to our community is actually governed by state statute through the Florida Department of Health. In order for us to be able to maintain compliance, the state comes out about every two years and they inspect. They do a full inspection, they do a site visit, where they inspect our, our personnel records to make sure all certifications are compliant. They actually go out to the stations, they inspect our apparatus, because our apparatus for an ambulance, you're required to have so much inventory of not only medical supplies, medications, we have to be able to show a proper chain of custody for all of our narcotics that we carry and so forth. And I'm proud to say that under the leadership of Chief, Deputy Chief Steve Livingston, and members of our department, that we basically completed this inspection with outstanding, with no deficiencies. And I got just one, one sentence that kind of sums it up from our inspector, Mr. Sam Thurman. He's the Region 5 Inspector for the Bureau of Medical, Emergency Medical Services, and he says, "Thank you for being such a role model of excellence as an EMS provider in the state of Florida." So I attribute that to the men of, and personnel of the Oviedo Fire Department, so.
Oh, good news, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That's why we love our firemen.
Very cool, yeah. Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Sorry. I'm used to saying Deputy Mayor. The peach tree, we discussed it briefly at your last work session, and you asked us to provide you with information, which we sent you a number of links regarding the peach tree. Just wanted to make sure that it's okay for us to move forward to have the tree planted as a celery part.
Yep, that's good of me.
Okay.
All right, cool.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. City attorneys, report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
All right, Mr. Pollock is not with us, or Mr. Butterford? Mr. Britton, you're next up.
Okay, two quick items. Is Bobby still here? Bobby's here. Hey, just some kudos. I was going out of the neighborhood today and I saw some existing potholes on the street and called up Public Works. They said, "Give us a day to do it," and by this afternoon, they were done. So kudos to those guys for getting on the ball. But my, my question now is, do we have anything on social media that has a contact number? If a citizen sees a pothole that's getting bigger, that they could call it in and, and, you know, report it so it could be acted upon pretty quickly? I know they acted upon when I called them, but I'm, you know, I'd like the other citizens to be able to do that, too.
I'm like staring at Patrick over my, over my left shoulder. We have the fix-it form, which has been pretty common for residents to, I was about to use the word complain, but to advise us of anything that we, you know, potholes, tree limbs, sidewalks, and any of the other, you know, miscellaneous items that we normally have to attend to.
And that's on social media, or is that just on the website?
I would have to, I'm gonna defer to Patrick on this one.
I know it's on the front page of the website.
It is on the front page of the website, Mr. Britton. From time to time, we do put it out on social media to remind folks that it is there.
Okay.
For it to be linked there, we could probably add something in the description box, the about box, I guess you would say, on Facebook page.
I see a lot of comments about, no, there's a pothole here, pothole there, and I'm not sure-
Like where? Where are the potholes?
Yeah, I'm not sure they're getting the, the message to where it needs to be to get fixed, 'cause I know you guys are pretty responsive when you get the call.
And the, the form is set up so that they have a checkbox, they pick the issue that is, say a pothole or tree, and it automatically routes to that staff member that addresses that issue.
Okay.
So.
And on Android, will it do the coordinates as well?
On cellphones, that they have to have location services turned on for that to work.
Okay.
So it really, it just, it's hit or miss usually for the, that whole-
You can do photos, too, Mon.
And, and you can send photos in, and that's very useful for us.
But those coordinates, for a while, and, and we talked about this a little bit ago, it, it looks like it disappeared from the App Store for people who have iPhones, but people who have an Android can still get that fix-it form on their phones.
That's what the, the vendor told us, yes.
So I think that would probably be a good social media blitz to try to help people say, hey, if you have an Android, please, oh, please get this app on your phone.
When we do-
Turn on your location services, and then we'll know where the pothole is, instead of like somewhere on Lockwood. Well, that's not very helpful.
And when we do bring a redesign, which we're going to talk about soon, that update of the mobile application will come with it, too.
Thank you. You got anything else?
Yeah, one other thing, roundabouts. You know, we, we talk about roundabouts, and we also talk about this Vision Zero program, which is a safety program to try to reduce not only accidents, but fatalities on our roads, especially with pedestrians and bicycles. And roundabouts, in my mind, are a good way to, to kind of help with that program and help create a safer, a more safe environment, so. Brian, when we talk to the, the county about this reconsideration, maybe we can use that as a, as an enhancement to the idea of a roundabout versus a signal.
All right, anything else?
That's, that's it.
All right. I, too, like not traffic signals. And I drew a little thing that's not a roundabout, that I think I just created a public record, 'cause I'm gonna pass it off to Mr. Wyatt. I think it would be substantially less expensive than a roundabout, but it might, it might do the trick. So I'm glad that we're slowing down. Thank you guys for being willing to reconsider at a later time, so everybody has a little bit of breathing time. I think the county may be, I think they have good intentions. There is $650,000 of the once-aid sales tax that needs to be allocated in a, in a set amount of time. But we can have that be allocated to something that's not counterproductive to a roundabout, and that also takes advantage of us building a turn lane. If we do some really wide medians that let people turn, turn right and then do a loop, kind of like by Bernie's Gourmet.
Is that a Michigan U-turn? Is that what they call it?